Good evening to each of you and welcome to the Alachua County School Board for March nineteenth, twenty twenty four. If you will all please stand for our pledge allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Ms. Rolo, we're ready for Lincoln Middle School String Quartet under the direction of Todd Eckstein.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Andrew and District Administrators. March is Music in Our Schools Month and we are highlighting music education and some of our talented music students once again this evening. Tonight, we have some incredible musicians from the Lincoln Middle School Orchestra Program under the direction of Todd Eckstein. The Terrier Quartet is composed of seventh graders Jasmine Alcatani, Shereen Alcatani, Kimberly O and Kira Mulligan. The Lincoln Middle School Orchestra is the only middle school orchestra in Alachua County. The orchestra program has received the highest rating of superior for seven straight years and they recently moved up a classification level to compete using orchestra music that is high school level. So, very talented students in the orchestra program at Lincoln Middle School. Please welcome the Terrier Quartet performing "Boreas" by Todd Parrish.
Woo, excellent, yes. Excellent, excellent, yes. You all finished?
We are done.
All right. Love this part of the meeting because it just sets the tone for the meeting. Excellent students, excellent, excellent, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Eckstein, for all that you do. So wonderful hearing the instruments. Thank you all, and thank you to the parents who brought them out here tonight. Thank you so much. Anything from the colleagues want to say to the children, anything?
Nothing, I was kind of building up as they were going and then coming back down. So, very good job. Thank you all for coming and joining us tonight.
Now, I just want to read for those who are here with us this evening before I ask for an adoption of the agenda. To the members of the public, of course, we are always welcome to hear from you. And if you wish to address the board, we ask you that you see Ms. Jackie Johnson to make sure you fill out the sheets. We need those for our records. We may also have virtual participants calling into the meeting to offer public comment. If we're not able to get to you, to your comments in the initial thirty-minute public comment period, you may have time to address the board at the end of the meeting because we have two. If you wish to address the board or an item on the agenda for this meeting, please also fill out the public comment form and come to the microphone when that item is reached on the agenda. Please remember that each individual has a limited time. You have three minutes unless they get to twenty or more. Three minutes to address the board. Make sure you focus on the issue at hand and not public attacks. And so, all directions must be addressed to the chair. No person may address or question board members or staff individually. This is a business meeting. If your comments become disorderly or if your conduct interferes with the orderly progress of the meeting, you will be asked to leave or may be escorted out of the meeting if necessary. Thank you so much for your cooperation. Now, we have our agenda before us. I'm asking for an adoption of the agenda as printed.
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second? Moved and properly seconded. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the approval of the regular school board workshop meeting minutes for February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Need a motion? Been moved by Dr. McNeely, is there a second? Second by Ms. Abbott, is there any discussion, any comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of our regular school board meeting minutes for March fifth, twenty twenty four.
So moved.
Been moved by Ms. Rockwell, is there a second? Been seconded by Ms. Surtin, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to student representative board member and superintendent request. Any requests? Okay, student reps, you have something, go ahead. So glad to see you this evening.
Hi, how's it going? My name is Jabril Batru, I'm a senior at Eastside High School. If you didn't catch me last time, I will be representing, acting as a student representative to the school board. Thank you so much to our Lincoln Middle School String Quartet for that, that was incredible. I also, on a little bit of a sad note, I think it is important to acknowledge the passing of a member of our Eastside community very recently. I believe on Sunday night or perhaps Monday morning. You know, as we grapple with this loss, I think it's a loss for the entire Alachua County school community and I hope that as this meeting passes, we can really keep their family and our thoughts and yeah, all of Eastside as a whole. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any more, Ms. Surtin?
Thank you. I would just, you know, hope everyone had a wonderful spring break while you, this past weekend, we're back into the saddle. I think we got a long time before we have another student holiday and also I'm hoping everyone had some good rest and relaxation during the break. And I just want to say, I was happy to see our students here for Lincoln and the music and arts in our school. That's a program that is funded by the special assessment, a voter-approved assessment, the One Mill, and I thank the citizens for doing that. But what I want to, my comments this morning, tonight, I don't really have announcements per se. I would like to have some discussion at the end of our meeting with the board about the situation out at Newberry. So, I just want to kind of just put that on your mind for us to talk because there's some things I think discussion we should have between us as a board and we do that at the end of the meeting. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Dr. McNeely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to congratulate, I was at a performance last night at the Performing Arts, Who's in the Box Part Two, and I want to congratulate Patrick Lloyd for what a great rendition that he did with all of the cast. It was superb. And I will be asking of the superintendent and Mrs. Rolo and some other folk how that we can get all of our middle and possibly high school students to be able to witness what we saw on last evening. Also, I would like to congratulate all of the high school student poets that participated recently in The Courageous Young Voices. It was amazing to hear the spoken word from our students. You did an absolute tremendous job. There were so many and I did not want to try to make a list of all of the participants, but I want you to know, I really, really was amazed at the poetry that you came through with at that session. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely, and Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On behalf of Alachua County Public Schools and the School Board of Alachua County, we'd like to wish Mrs. Magnolia Jackson happy belated one hundred and sixth birthday. Some of you may have seen this in the paper and the celebrations that went on around Gainesville and there was a celebration at her home, I understand, and I believe they had an opportunity to go to Disney World. But Mrs. Jackson, just to put a little history out there, was born in nineteen eighteen on March fourteenth in Rochelle, Florida. Those of you that are from Alachua County know Rochelle is just east of here on the way out to Hawthorne. So, it's right there south of Windsor. Mrs. Jackson graduated from Lincoln High School here in Gainesville in nineteen thirty-five. She went on and earned her Bachelor of Science degree in Education from Bethune-Cookman College. I think many of you know Bethune-Cookman University these days, right? Of course, that's in Daytona Beach, she graduated from there in nineteen forty-four. Mrs. Jackson taught at Shell Elementary School in Hawthorne during her over forty years of service to our children as an educator. So, again, we just want to take a moment to join others in saying happy belated birthday to Mrs. Magnolia Jackson. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other announcement? Moving on to the chair's report. First of all, I want to say congratulations to Nathan, I think it's Wee, a senior at Bu霍t High School who won a hundred thousand dollar award after placing among the top winners in the prestigious Regeneron Science Talent Search. We took fourth place in the competition finals, which were held during spring break in Washington, DC. He was one of just forty students invited to present their research projects in the finals. So, congratulations Nathan and representing Alachua County Public Schools and Bu霍t High School very well. Thank you so much. TEDx Gainesville High School was founded by Abheath Casala, a Gainesville High School student in collaboration with the Gainesville High School Administration with the mission to create a dynamic platform for community members to share and celebrate groundbreaking ideas, worth spreading and serve as a catalyst in extending the curiosity of the captivating world of STEAM, science, technology, engineering and math for the advancing world. The event will be held on Saturday, April twenty-seventh, from eleven AM to six PM at Gainesville High School. The cost is fifteen dollars for students and twenty dollars for adults. Teachers can get in free if they recruit ten or more of their students to attend. Information and registration, including payment, can be found at HTTPS colon ax slash backslash TEDxGainesvilleHighSchool.com backslash. The registration cost includes the full day program, an event tee-shirt and refreshments. So, let's try to support our students when we can. The renaming of the district office, we've been talking about the ad hoc committee, will be led by Mrs. Wanza Wakely, requesting each board member to submit two names of Alachua County residents to be a part of that committee and you can submit that within the next two weeks. I need that within the next two weeks, two, that's what the policy says. If you want to look at the policy, you can look at the policy. Next board workshop will be held April tenth, twenty twenty-four, from nine eight AM to five PM. Topics of discussion will be the MSID of Duval Early Learning Academy update, dual enrollment update, Alachua County Public School trend report, hope that includes behavior, budget update, superintendent's evaluation tool. If you would like to provide citizen input on an input on the agenda, please make sure you fill out a speaker's request form. These forms are over there again at the table, but that will be April tenth, so you will know those topics ahead of time. Also, tonight, oh, okay, no problem. And I'll send this to you all as well. Also, tonight, as the Chair of the Alachua County School Board, sometimes as a leader, you have to take time out to address things. And so, tonight, I'm going to address the article. You all saw, many saw, an article in the Gainesville Sun. And one thing I do, I'm really in thanking our staff and our district office for. Ms. Jackie Johnson, just want to thank you because any misinformation, as people know, marketing is key for me. And if you are putting out information that's not correct or misinformation, because my focus is on what's best for children, I'm going to make sure moving forward that that information is corrected. And so, first of all, to the person who wrote the article, an experienced journalist would have called the district office and asked for correct information. The article was written in a way to take aim, of course, at myself, the Chair, Dayan McGraw, and also our superintendent. It was a summary of things that have gone on all last year. And here I was enjoying my spring break and on Sunday, I began to get phone calls from people about, did you see the article, did you see the article this past week? And sometime, as Michelle Obama says, when they go high, when they go low, you go high. But I decided, because when people begin, it's one thing when we want to hear everybody and I think as a chair, I have made it clear that anybody's welcome. We may not always agree, but you're welcome, but you must be respectful when you come in and you talk. That takes you a long way in life, plus we're in the business of serving children. And so, when you're working with children, we should be an example for children because that's something I do, I go into the schools and I talk to our children. And so, when you look, it's a way to make people look bad because we're in the election season. And so, I got to draw everything to attack someone's character. And this past week, first I'mma read what, thank you so much Jackie, what you, Ms. Johnson, what you put out to the person who wrote the article for the Gainesville Sun. She wrote, there are some significant issues with the story, beginning with the premise that a new school was submitted to the state without required board approval. And the way it was written is if Mr. Andrew and I had gotten together to create or do something under the table. Those who truly know me, they know that that's not in my repertoire. I wouldn't do that. There was, there was no, and there is no new school. What happens is, when you're talking about the MSID number, just like we have one, Duval has been not functioning in school for three years, you got Prairie View sitting over there. It's part of operations, remember now, we're governance. As part of operations, the superintendent can hold on to a number in case you want to use it for some other way. There was a discussion last year about the possibility of starting a new program sometime during the school year to serve elementary school. Students with disciplinary problems, issues, including those enrolled in the Character Counts programs located at a city near your school, a potential location was the former Horizon Center, which is the current location of Alachua East School. What many know that when I came on this board and I began to visit, one of the things, and we all presented, each one of us had a priority wanted to present. And with this priority, mine was behavior because behavior and attendance all go hand in hand with the achievement gap. And when I went around to the school to visit, I'm just going to say, as a person, when I looked, I said, oh my goodness. I got back in my car and I sat there and I said, oh my God, I need a cigarette, I don't even smoke. Because you're asking our staff to work. And when the behavior needs to be addressed and it has not, it can be very detrimental to a student, to parents, other students, or what have you. So, I felt the need for that to be addressed because many people applauded me once I addressed that issue. Also, if the decision had been made to start up such a program this year, an MSID number would have been needed. MSID numbers have to be requested by June first of any program to start during the following school year. And the application only requires a superintendent's signature. Because of the June first deadline, which is operational, not governance, if a program of a school is going to be reopened, that is something that comes before the board. The district went ahead and submitted a request for an MSID number from the state so that such a program could be started if it was approved. The request was made to the state and approved by an elementary program, not high school, contrary to what was in the story. Also, this is not a charter school, also contrary to what it is in your story. I serve Alachua County Public School. Nowhere have I had a conversation about this school would have been a charter school to take funding dollars, FT dollars, out of our district. Again, no such school has been opened or activated. On the page, when she was talking to Nora, you will note that the Early Learning Academy, Duval, is still listed on the MSID page, although it is closed, closed years ago as a school and also does not have any students. So, this process is not unusual. So, in my response, when I read the article and I said, oh, the same old dirty politics to make the superintendent and the Chair look bad or seem incompetent or that we're in cahoots and also the attack on my beautiful, wonderful daughter, Brooksie. First of all, as I said earlier, an experienced journalist was called to ensure that the information is correct. So, the question becomes, where did the information come from? Unfortunately, because Ms. Johnson was not called. Unfortunately, this information came from, could it be some people that work in the district? Our Board Policy zero one four two tells us not to undermine the work of the district. Because when we begin to undermine the work of the district, that means trust becomes an issue. Communication, misinformation, shows that we're not willing to listen to one another. And the very reason we are all here... And the very reason we are all here and that we were elected was to work for the children. My focus has always been on the children and the families that we serve. To support our staff, if there's something that I don't agree with, I go in and I schedule a meeting with the superintendent. I meet twice a month as a board member with the superintendent. So if there's anything that I feel needs to be addressed, that's who I have to address it through. The article also wanted to, is if, if I am afraid to speak up or apologize if I did anything wrong. And the other thing was the superintendent search. Oh, it painted out that when I said before I was elected and also since we've been elected, about a superintendent's search. However, there again, as a board member, I visited 35 schools in the first two weeks of school. And when I went around, I went around to say to the people, I'm here to support. What do you need? Because we know things have not been good or well in our school for the past 30 years. But I must say, progress is happening in Alachua County schools. So I took the time out, I took the initiative to meet with superintendent and his staff, the leadership team, school administrators, teachers, students, parents, and families. And the majority of all of them in the school said, hey, I want some stability. So as a board member, I listened to the community. I heard the staff. We're not going to ever have 100%, but if you got over 80% saying, I don't want any change, then guess what? I'm going to try to be obedient and work with my community. Because relationships are important, and that's how we get things done. And so I listened to the very constituents, to the very community that I serve. My character. It's one thing that you may not agree with me, but when you begin to attack people's character and attack their families, that's low blow. That is, that is, because everybody in here has a family. And nobody wants to see their family. And we know, and I'm not asking for any sympathy, because politics is what it is. And I've shown people since 2020, I'm not afraid to be in the know of the politics. The poorly written article that is full, it, it, it attacked for no reason. It brought up information that how is he going to make a difference when it comes to children? It's a shame that we have local newspapers who look at more of being mean, degrading. Because our children, again, our children, they see this. And one of the things I've done lately, I spend time, I spent a lot of time talking to our students, especially those in Newberry. And they said to me, they are just so tired. All of the behavior that they see with the adults, when are we going to get it together? Because that's who we forget about. And my, my road to making sure the betterment for our children is important. That's why I'm here. That's, that's my focus. The other thing, and I said tonight, I'm going to take my time. Because like I said tonight, this was a time for me to say what I, what I feel. Relationships, if you want to get anything done, how you treat people is going to take you along. And that's how we get things done for our children. Because if you can't build solid relationships, I don't care how smart you are, I don't care how knowledgeable you are, you're not going to get anywhere. Because people say, oh, my goodness, here that person comes, or here she comes. I don't want to be bothered. Integrity. When people talk about, and I know we have people here in the audience tonight about the Newberry situation, but one thing about it, when it comes to, when I was, when I'm president or a leader of any organization, I've always been taught to lead with integrity. Because we don't know what's going to come. And I learned in my training as a school board member, we don't know what's going to come before the board. But if I've gone out and tried to isolate or be biased against one side or the other, then I'm already showing that I don't want to be fair to everybody involved. It's called integrity. When I was president of the four As, Mr. Bud, we are very close, who ran for city commission. He came to me and said, Dayan, I need your endorsement. I said to him, I cannot endorse until after our process. Because I want to be fair to everybody who was coming to be a part of the forum. You want to make sure you're only fair. That's all. And so that to me is leading with integrity. Our district has hired an attorney. Ms. Johnson, I must say to you again, you've done a great job putting out facts. But when you, you look at Facebook or people are sending you things where board members are being called lapdogs and all kind of ugly names, our children, there again, they see them. They see them. And after me being a volunteer since the age of 22, and I'm now 54, in Alachua County Public Schools, I must say, there are great things that are happening. I, I get so much joy when I see the barbering school class that we have implemented at Eastside High School. Isn't that right? Isn't that right? Because guess what? It's making a difference. It's improved the behavior. It's improving attendance, because what? Our students are looking forward to it. It helps with gun violence, all of that. Dual enrollment is able to be on campus now. If you're part-time, if you're full-time, you still got to go to Santa Fe. We had three kids, schools come out of turnaround. There are great things. I went to speak to the city of Alachua Chamberlain. There are great things that's happening. Aren't they going to happen overnight? But one thing I promised my community is that as I'm serving, I'm going to be a part of the solution. I can't keep going back in the past. But I can be a part of the solution. But when you begin to continue, you see it. And when you see months and months go by, where you, especially when you attack my family, I'm going to speak up. And so tonight, I felt compelled to say what I see. And I'm going to continue to serve with integrity. I'm going to continue to talk with everybody. But I'm going to be fair in my decisions that I make. Thank you for listening. And I wanted to say that to our citizens tonight. Dr. McNeil, I see your light.
Madam Chair, I do apologize for my first comments tonight. I did not turn it off. I do apologize.
Okay, no problem. Ms. Surt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I listen and can understand and feel from the place where you're coming from. I have just a couple of things I'd like to say that I don't want to wait to the end of the meeting. I am unapologetically against the no on the charters in Newberry. And I will speak from now. I've spoken with the attorney. He told me that you and the superintendent wanted him to call me. And I told him, I'm not able to honor that request to stay quiet. I am not against the citizens of Newberry starting three new schools or one new charter, however they want to do it. But I am with every pound that's in my body. And I ain't going to reveal my weight, because I picked up some since I've been up here. But I'm against it. And I'm standing and I will speak. I'll go down. Now, the vote, I don't have a vote in it. But I will continue to advocate for the district to operate public schools for students. Because, you know, like you, I kind of thought about some things and I have a lot of notes. But the problem that I have is they want three public assets that the citizens all over Alachua County paid for. They contributed tax dollars for that. And in getting those three buildings, they want the authority to say who can come to them. And they leave people out. So my family, your family, you from Memphis, you, you talk about your work and your mom's work and how you grew up in the civil rights, you know, fighting for civil rights. Folks will be excluded. And, and there have been a couple dueling memos out there about rezoning. But because Newberry Elementary School is overcrowded, they can then restrict who would come. And so a district school, that's not the case. And any student that they decide not to accept at Newberry Elementary School, the district has still got to serve them. So there's no automatic eligibility to attend those three schools in Newberry if this passes. There's no due process for expulsions when students could be expelled. I don't deny that we have some behavior challenges, but they were, they, they've been in the school for a number of years. We, we talked, like you, I've, I've been volunteering in the school since 22 also, since I was 22 and I'm 55. So I, I got a long history of volunteering. And like you, I decided to run because I saw, I, I thought I could bring something to the table to make it work, work a little bit better. I didn't think things were well. But I want to focus on students. And I think that process of converting those schools to charter will limit the opportunities for students with severe disabilities. It will limit the opportunities for students whose parents cannot bring them to school because they, they've put a dollar in for transportation. And because I don't think they're going to be able to provide transportation. It'll limit that. And when I ran, I ran to, to advocate for equitable opportunities and access for students. And if those schools convert to charters, there won't be equitable access. What, who usually gets left out in these types of situations? Marginalized people that live at the margins, children of color, children with disabilities. And so I'm, I'm, I'm against that. I am. And I'm going to, and I will. And, and if, if folks say I'm biased, I, I am. I'm biased. I'm, I'm biased because when I took my oath, it was, you know, I, I said I was going to, I, I ran to uphold the Constitution and all that stuff. But in my heart, I was going to advocate for public schools district. And that includes district run public schools. And I've been overly critical before I was on the board. And I think I still have the space to be critical now as a board member. Because they're criticizing me. Anything that doesn't get done is on me. There's no impact or no input from the community on the curriculum adoption. The district, when we adopt curriculum, there's a prescribed process that goes through the, the charters. That, that's not the case. As I said, the low socioeconomic students have the potential to be left out. I feel they, based on some communications that I've heard and read and been sent to the district via email by the mayor, that they making an emphasis of how, how many students that don't live in the city of Newberry that attend that school. And for years, that is not how, that's, that's, that, that school, the school zone has been, has been drawn for that. And ESC kids, children with severe disabilities or just that need additional support, they're expensive to serve. And challenging to serve. And the charters can just say that they don't want to, they can't, they don't have the capacity to do that, and then we will have to do this. So I am going to continue to advocate publicly against the Newberry charter schools. And then I don't know, the MSID, I read that. I was on my break trying to enjoy a break also. But it did make me go back and, and kind of review what we did around the MSID. I, I bought this up in when we were in executive, not executive session, in master board, that, that MSID had been created. And when we had the workshop on May 3rd, that was where we were just sharing ideas. We didn't say that was something we were going to do, that the board was going to vote on. And that has to come to the board, because that's a budget decision. And the MSID for, to go on pause for Duval was brought to the board for a vote. Ms. Neal can confirm that. She also brought it back to us when we, and we voted to say if we wanted to continue to keep it on pause. So May 3rd, we had the workshop on behavior. And you brought in, it was, you know, that was, you said it was well received for an alternative school. And like I said to, to you, I, I don't deny that there are, there are behavior issues. But I felt that the resources we have in place right now are serving those. Horizon School was not discussed as an option. Then on June 1st, that application is dated. The superintendent signed the form saying that the school was opening in August. And that was the day after the budget was presented at a workshop where the school was not mentioned. And on that signature page, it says, "I have read the foregoing master school identification number application. And to the best of my knowledge, the facts stated in it are true." On June 20th, it was activated by the state. On August 17th of 2023, the application was updated. You know, and it, I, that was something that, you know, you say, we had to do it by June 1st. I read that in the, in the state administrative rule. But if we're, if we're, the school is listed as active now. It's listed as active in, if you go online on, on the state site, website, it's listed as active. But if it's going to come, if we're going to have a school or different learning location that has budget implications or impact, those are things that the board should be consulted on. And I don't think we were. And I think it seems to be that there's a lot of planning and moving forward without board alignment.
That's not true. That's why I made the statement.
Okay, but, but Ms. McGraw, so if you, if you would not, like I said, if it appears the parents that there is board, a misalignment in how we would proceed forward as a board. There are things, and I guess for me, that get sprung on the board. Like there was the, the situation with Prairie View saying we're going to open that as a, as a school site. And in meeting, I've met with the superintendent and made requests to the superintendent and don't get information. I asked in that meeting about Prairie View, how much that would cost to run a IB program. And then even with the change of moving it back to Williams. So for me, the community engagement and engagement with the board, us having alignment, that's really key, and that's been lacking. I've asked several times, because this is a monumental thing for the two schools in East Gainesville, the year round. When are we going to go to those parents? When are we going to ask them? And if this is what meets their needs? We can say what we think is best for them. But how are we, when are we going to ask them? How does this fit into your plans for how you got, you want to educate? Your student, your child. We provide the service, but I think we owe that to them. And you and I have commiserated before, either of us were on the board, at how we felt the current, that superintendent at that time and the board ignored us as citizens, ignored our community. So for me, I, I am with you. I want us to have student focus and to, to do things that are going to benefit students. And my advocacy will always be for that. We come at it from two different angles. Yours isn't wrong. Mine is. I'm not saying you're, you're wrong. And I'm not, I hope you wouldn't say that mine is wrong. But I, I just think that we don't want to, to get to think, well, when you talk with people and you said you talk with 80% of the people, well, you know, we, we each talk with a lot of people. But we don't want to get to the point to think that the people that we talk with in our circle, that that is, that's all, that's all that's out there. And I think as an organization, I've spoken with Ms. Johnson even about this and made suggestions as to information that we should be addressing. I think when this first came out, the district should have had something. We should tell people what we do and we do well. Because this organization does a good job of educating some students. It does. Does a very good job of educating some students. But there's some, we have some gaps. And lastly, I want to say, I don't, I don't know where they got that, because the info to write the article. But I do want us to, to, to not, to just be cognizant that we, we serve. And those that are working here, we work in a public institution that's covered by Chapter 119. And Florida has broad public records laws. And as a citizen, when I asked for public records, because they wouldn't give it to me when I asked them for stuff. So I had to go send it to the email address. I don't even, the law says, I don't even have to tell you who I am. I can ask for it anonymously. And, and if I, if I ask for it, I don't have to tell you why I want it. And, and, and we, I think now the tenor of how we, we, we treat citizens when they ask for information or ask questions, I don't, I don't like that. I don't think, if they ask for public records, it's there, give it to them. And, and I think that is, you know, when I worked at GRU for some of my last years that were there and stuff with the biomass plant, it got a little convoluted, because they were telling us, don't put things in writing, because they didn't want to have it as a public record. But that's unfair to your employees. That's unfair to the citizens. We operate in a public institution, and those are the laws that Florida has. And I don't think we should say that if somebody's asking for a public record, that they don't have trust. Auditors come in, they review records, you can, they interview you, but they're going to go and do some sampling and look at supporting documents to make sure that what you told them is supported in documentation. It has nothing to do with trust. It's just trust but verify. And a lot of times, that's where I am. And I, and really, right now, honestly, I've actually almost submitted a public records request myself for information from the superintendent. I've asked him how much certain things are going to cost. And if we're moving I've asked him how much certain things are gonna cost, and if we're moving forward with something, we should know that, that information should be given to us freely. I shouldn't have to ask for a public record for that. I just met with him on Monday, and I, the information that I was asking for about the cost on things, it's, we're three months before the end of the fiscal year, and we haven't, we don't have any budget stuff. And the programs that I was asking about, if we're thinking about going that way and doing, opening Duval up as a V pre K center or whatever, it, we should have a plan, and I, and I shouldn't have to wait for that. I, I just shouldn't. We should have, we should have had that, and I think I missed the last workshop where it was discussed, but all of that should have come forward. And I don't think anyone, a citizen or another board member, should be made to feel that they're imposing upon someone or they're doing something wrong for asking for information. If you ask, that is, that is part of our right as being citizens. That's why we have the four-year act, Freedom of Information Act, you know? But I, I, you know, I just, I want us to not, not act like we're adversaries with each other or with the citizens when they ask questions. And, you know, I, I hate the, the article in the newspaper, you know, kind of set you off or whatever like that, but.
It's not really about setting me off. It's just that I want to correct misinformation, just like you're saying. When you went on Facebook and said, "I think the three of them agree," you were wrong to do that because we hadn't said anything. What I said earlier, public board policies, you are one for it too. You, we made a request. Dr. Rockwell asked for a F A Q to go out. All of that went. She even complimented Ms. Jackson. The F A Qs went out to teachers and parents. They're the ones that sat. You know, I didn't know anything about the second one. The problem in what I'm saying, I go back to this, Ms. Surtin, relationships. Just like a lot of people said to me when I came back after being removed from the board, oh, you, I could have come back with a vendetta. No, I didn't. I didn't come back angry, did I? People would tell you that. I came back getting straight to work, working for children. That's what I'm supposed to do. But when you speak or you try to speak for the rest of the board, no, no, no. As a leader, my job is to support. Like I said, if I don't agree with something with Mr. Andrew or anything, we do that behind closed doors. I'm not saying that to be transparent because the previous administration, it was seven months before we even talked to the, the community, the previous superintendent. I know that because I was here. What I'm saying is, we must be decent in order to every single body that we serve. It doesn't matter, black, white, purple, green, it doesn't matter, L G B T Q, whatever.
Agreed.
And, and, and when, but when, but as a leader, just like I said, and I gave the example, when I was president of the four A's, that's my leadership. It has nothing to do before, but for us to go on Facebook and undermine because this information that gets to the newspaper incorrect, somebody's feeding it. All I'm saying is, if, if I'm getting paid a salary, and that's my belief, from a district, it's just like if you worked at G R U, if I worked at this county, if I went out to the county and working, every time I spoke, there's something negative, I'm gonna, you know what, I'm gonna be brought in eventually. It's not about you, and I didn't ask Mr. Delaney, we all met to discuss about liability because we already have one complaint that's been filed. And so what happens is, and I looked at what was in Newberry, but to call me and I see on Facebook a bully or to make somebody feel intimidated, that's offensive to me because I'm not gonna get into, as I say, I'm gonna stay high. I'm, I'm not gonna get into the Facebook because this hat, as a school board member, I can never take off what I learned in training. It overlaps one another. And so when you do that, I try to keep the integrity. So anybody know, they can call me, talk to me at any time, but what I'm saying is, you cannot, none of us can speak for one another. We all have five votes. But what the article insinuated is if I'm behind the scene working. What I did, I went and did research as far as the, because when people decide, one thing about it I know for sure, and I've talked to many of their parents, they want their children safe when they come to school. Last year, when I did that presentation, I'm giving this example, there were thirty-seven firearms. We now have ninety-six firearms. North Central Ford has a hundred and eighty students. SciTech has, has a hundred and fifty-three, A M I has twenty-three, we're up to a hundred and eighteen. We have D J J program, fifty-six. Forty-two kids last Thursday were waiting on intake because at least they've been to court one time. Forty-four holding for deposition to get into court, three adults in prison, eleven in county jail, two in Levee County, as a D seven third, three in Volusia County Jail. These are still our students and not counting the American Legion brawl situation. You have four. So we talking about almost five hundred kids. My thing is, if we're going to make sure we can close our gap or the, you know, we don't want these kids just out here on the streets because we know gun violence is on TV every day. My concern is that we don't want a Columbine or something to happen in our schools. And so one of the things I began to say, we, everybody up here, we should be working together, which I don't have a problem with, just like with your, you came last week and asked for about the sixty thousand for the county literacy. I took time out during spring break to go over and meet with the executive director to get a copy of the proposal to see exactly what she was talking about, since you didn't go in detail, and I sent it to everybody on this board. I took Alachua because just to be a team player, even though Alachua may be in my district, everybody else all gets shirts and try to work together. And sometimes these conversations, I'm glad we having this conversation tonight, but I can't control what anybody says on the board. But as a leader, I'm the chair. I'm going to make sure I keep the integrity. But to say that any of us are supporting, but sometimes we also can, can say things that, that create situations that really are not. This district, no, 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 let me finish. This district did a great job of responding to the F A Q because that state statute has been on the books. It's nothing we can do about that. We've even hired an attorney, as I said earlier, who's an expert in the conversion charter school to make sure. That, because if something does come before the board, what I've learned from other attorneys and F S B A, that in order for me to vote, I have to have been just in the middle, get all the information when you make your, if you have, if something does come before this board. Nothing is coming for this board. But I look at what's out on Facebook, people have insinuated that we've already made, the other three have made a decision, and you spoke for us. No, that's not right. And tonight, I said that I was going to make sure I addressed that. And also, we, we can't always, and when I go and meet with somebody, if I'm showing up and I'm continuously negative every single time I come, everybody is different. When I come in and try to approach, I try to say, hello, how are you doing today? Is everything okay? Because you, you get things done when you build relationships. But if I'm being, if people are feeling, and this district feels, a lot of the staff has felt this way because they've said it to me, if they're feeling attacked all the time or they're always, because we also got to give them a chance to get their work done as well. I have no problem with you being transparent. You all can say whatever you want to say on Facebook, but to take it and say that I'm trying to bully and intimidate and paint another picture on me, not acceptable.
So I don't, I don't, I'm not, I don't know who told, said that about you, but I will go back to the conversation.
Screenshots come from those private little groups, but it's okay.
Monday, a week ago, two weeks ago, I guess, where it was brought to my attention, Ms. Abbott brought it up. And I thought that I dealt with that then, as I apologized to you, Ms. Abbott, and Dr. McNeilian said that perhaps that was not the right thing to say.
Yeah.
So I, I did take care of that. Yeah. So I, I guess the reason why I'm going, I'm wondering if you did because you just brought that back up again, and that's why I was.
Example because you brought up the other things.
No, well, I guess, like I said, we, we will disagree on, 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 on that. But when I said that I will speak and advocate for the schools to stay under the district's control, that is what I was referring to.
Okay.
And my comments have always have tried to be factual. I spoke with Ms. Johnson about the one meal rebuttal, putting out F A Qs to share what the district is doing. I asked, because I keep hearing all of these maintenance issues, I asked the superintendent, I asked Ms. Johnson as well as Ms. Eunice, do we have
Absolutely.
information on work orders. We used to get that report, and that was discontinued. We used to get it by school and by zone, work orders that were put in, resolved and closed, so that we can see what the issues are. We can't address that because just because somebody said something, like you just said, you, you just reflected on the article, you said it wasn't true, just because the folks on the, the yes, Newberry side are saying things and they're putting things out, does not make it true. And the way we counteract that is by putting out facts and the things and the way that the district are doing.
Has been doing.
Right. And, and the only way we can do that is if we have data and if we ask questions and we say, and there's some things that Ms. Johnson, she has addressed. Dr. Rockwell asked for something, and she said, I got in contact with her and asked her about a second F A Q to put out. But I do think, I think we still, I still think we should go to the community and we should share with the, the parents at those three schools what the district is doing, what the plans are for that, but you know, but.
I think she's doing that. That's what I'm saying, allowing her to do her job.
I'm allowing her to do her job. I am. I'm allowing her to do her job. Yeah.
You put out what you want to put out.
Exactly. And, and I think, and we're all free to do that, and I understand my role, I understand your role. You know, but I do think we all want to keep the children and their families that we serve at the forefront all over the district, not just, like I said, at Newberry. I am, I'm seriously, I, it doesn't sit well with me that we have not reached out to those families who, that will be impacted by the year-round schooling. I've had several to contact me saying that that doesn't work in both schools close by. As, you know, I said, Sher, that I felt one of the schools.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I want to make sure, I'm saying what you're putting out, just like you said, they have been talking to parents and students. They have. Anybody, they, they have been addressed. That's what I'm saying, we gotta be careful not to undermine. Dr. Rockwell. Let me see your light. Is your light on?
It was on. I just decided to turn it off.
Thank you.
Because this has been going on more than long enough.
Yep. Sometimes we have to have these conversations. Okay, moving on to citizen input. Emily Owens will be first, followed by Crystal Tesman. Is that Dr. Crystal? You have three minutes, but your mic is not on. Turn your mic on. There you go. Uh-oh. I'll ponder. Thank you.
I want to thank the Alachua County School Board for your service to our community, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to voice my concerns. I'm just an ordinary old lady living in Gainesville, but I care about kids. I'm here with a combination of fear and rage. I fear for our children's future, and I'm feeling a certain amount of rage for some of the stuff coming out of Tallahassee, making it hard for us to do the right thing by our kids. Our kids are our most precious resource. They're our future. Don't lie to them. We can shelter them up to a point. We teach them the basics and try to build a thirst for more. We want to teach them the truth. Our country's principles are largely aspirational. We just took the pledge of allegiance, liberty and justice for all. Those aren't just words, and we've always fallen a little bit short, maybe a lot short. Freedom's always been relative. Some of my ancestors were indentured servants. That meant a three-year term basically as a slave, which has no comparison to a lifetime. Kids are smart enough to figure out when they've been lied to, and a lie kills trust. Our teachers are in an impossible position. They risk losing their teaching license if classroom discussion strays into vaguely defined areas like gender identification or the true history of our country, missing the mark, the goal for all of its citizens, liberty and justice for all. I also want to address resources. Books are pathways to adventure and new ideas. Children will benefit from guidance, but they need a chance to exercise their own judgment. Pulling books away denies kids a chance, and it forces everyone to lose because of one person's taste. In McMinn County, Tennessee, the school district banned this book. It was written by a Polish Jew who survived the Holocaust. The first volume was published in nineteen eighty-six. The second one won the Pulitzer in nineteen ninety-two. It was banned in twenty twenty-two, thirty years after he won the Pulitzer. You know what happened? It went to the bestseller list. Kids love forbidden fruit. Don't take away their choices. Let them learn. Let them grow. Don't put blinders on them.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. Thank you for your comments.
Chair McGraw, board members, student representatives, superintendent Andrew, district staff. My name is Dr. Crystal Tesman, A C E A Service Unit Director, Instructional Vice President and Chief Negotiator for E S Ps. Before I read this, the union is not privy to executive sessions, so when I use the phrase, the School Board of Alachua County, it is a majority of the board, but hopefully not everybody. I just wanted to read the press release that we put out today. With just weeks to go to reach the legislated sixty percent membership of education support professional employees, E S Ps, the School Board of Alachua County has made it clear how important the existence of our union is. On March fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, Alachua County Education Association proposed contract language that would provide E S Ps with the same workplace safety and comfort guarantees that are already in the instructional teacher's contract. A C A's proposal word count was five hundred and eight and included guarantees such as, "The board will make reasonable efforts to maintain work sites and vehicles in clean condition and in good repair."
Adam, excuse me for the interruption. Um, I would just want to caution that this is not the forum for collective bargaining.
Okay.
Not bargaining.
We haven't, we haven't noticed this as a, a public bargain.
So do you not want her to speak on it?
So I, I would just caution that the comments need to stick to public comments, not on bargain, issues that are currently being bargained.
So Dr. Tesman, please stick to.
I need my time back, though.
Go ahead.
I, I'm confused because we already bargained, and I'm reporting on a public bargaining. So I, I.
We already did?
Do I not, should I just read everything? Okay. A C A's proposals word count was five hundred and eight, included guarantees such as, "The board will make reasonable efforts to maintain work sites and vehicles in clean condition and good repair." Should the work site supervisor or their designee determine that the condition creates immediate danger to the E S P's other employees or students, they will take immediate action to prevent harm to the E S P, other employees and or students. Employees who are sensitive to vapors produced by maintenance, renovation or repair projects and cannot be moved to another area free of the toxic or harmful vapor shall be granted paid illness in the line of duty for the duration of the project, producing the harmful vapors are given an alternative assignment during the time when injury may result, among others. Last night at bargaining, the School Board of Alachua County responded with C C L, which means current contract language. In this case, that means the School Board of Alachua County agreed to none of the safety measures proposed by A C E A. When asked why, they're.
Just test me. I'm gonna ask you.
We have gone beyond just reporting what happened at a public bargaining session.
Nope, we haven't. But that's fine. You can see how it is, and I will.
Chair, this is, this is turned into advocacy during the public, as opposed to during a collective bargaining session.
Thank you. Is it Joe Smith? Yeah, because we have a degree on that here.
No, it's not on. There you go. Good evening. My name is Joe Smith. I am the parent of two here in Alachua County. My, I am also the pastor of an open and affirming church and a board member of the Pride Community Center. One week ago today, we got the news of historic settlement that helps dismantle the most harmful impacts of the Don't Say Gay and Trans laws, one of which was the banning of books containing L G B T Q plus characters or storylines. Locally, there has been a concentrated effort of a few to save the children from what they consider an abomination of God. This incredibly dangerous and harmful rhetoric is not new to Florida. We've seen it before, and this current iteration will be relegated to the same trash pile as those that came before. However, the fight isn't over. We all know what representation does for children and specifically those that are underrepresented in the United States. With that in mind, I would like to encourage you to update the county's policy to only remove access to the books that meet the new state criteria for removal while under review, to make a commitment to expand the district's efforts to ensure our students have access to diverse stories, families, authors and history, and to create a list of books that have been challenged, reviewed and approved to access within the school's library. I know that several of you. I know that several of you have spent much time and effort combating these laws and its effects, and I thank you. I would ask all of you now to give back the space to our kids that the state has tried to unsuccessfully take away. And I would just like to add that I'm so glad to see all of you here, and I think the book bans and the charter school push are all part of the same white Christian nationalist movement that we see that is trying to systemically dismantle our public education system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Yes, you have a sheet.
I'm, thank you, Chairman McGraw, board members, and Superintendent Andrew. I, I just have to comment that I totally disagree that we have sunshine laws and anything brought to a negotiation table can be shared publicly. And that being said, I'm moving on to my topic, which is, the union totally opposes a charter takeover of Newberry because of the employees that serve the children, the employees that are instructional and support staff would have no union. And with no union, they have no rights collectively bargained, and that is a problem. That means their salaries could disintegrate, they could privatize all of the support staff. It is detrimental to the students of the Newberry community, and I don't want anyone to say, if this vote goes the wrong way, I don't want anyone to say, where was the union, telling us that we were going to lose all our rights. And the teachers that can vote can squash this. Teachers have power right now, and they need to use it with a no vote. I went out to Oakview today, and I was assured by teachers at Oakview that they were voting no. And they are hoping that Newberry Elementary School and Newberry High School wake up, because it's going to be a shortage out there, it's going to be a mess. And I, I want to say the union is here, saying that right now, and we want it to go the correct way. And we want, we continue to work with the school district. I think Dr. Tesman's statement was about encouraging the board to bring proposals that you're proud of, not ones that you have to have your lawyer interrupt us because you're afraid that the public know how terrible the proposal was. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandy Oldman. Then will be Melissa Hawthorne after.
Hello, Board, Ms. McGraw.
Yes.
I'm nervous, so.
It's all right, it's okay.
I just want to talk about, I have three kids in the elementary school right now in Newberry, and I graduated a daughter in 2023 from the high school, and I think we have well-functioning public schools, and this is just chipping away money that could be put toward all of our public schools. These things are inherently exclusionary, is that the word? I think so. And I just, overall, I think it's a bad idea. I'd like to ask y'all to speak out publicly against the conversion. And I'd like to ask about the voting process. It doesn't seem set up to help people that are more rural areas, or lower-income people, or people that can't get there to vote, and the mail system, you know, goes to Jacksonville and back, and it's not enough time to get those ballots in, to get everybody's voices heard. It's just like this conversion's not set up for people, marginalized people, this vote isn't either. And I'm, I'm speaking out just as a parent, I'm, this is me, and much to my dismay, I've been attacked and harassed and threatened from the yes group, and that's okay, I'm fine with it, but I feel like I must speak up. Thank y'all for y'all's time.
Uh-huh, thank you. Melissa Hawthorne.
Hi, my name is Melissa Hawthorne. I'm a parent of Alachua County students, I'm also a teacher at Newberry High School, and I'm here to speak out and ask you guys to carefully consider what this means, the charter school conversion for not only Newberry, but for the entire community, but especially for Newberry. Conversion charter schools usually happen regarding failing schools. Newberry schools are not failing, they are A B schools. I find it really strange that that's happening. When a charter school is a conversion, there's usually nothing to lose, they're trying to keep it within the community. But in this case, a small group of parents want to take away a public school option for an entire community, and I think that that's bad for parents, students, and teachers, and the community. They are making guarantees that they cannot possibly keep. For example, future citizens may not, of Newberry, may not have a spot for their students in their community, because, so that's a problem, okay? Number two, I'm not afraid of innovation. I think innovation is a good thing, and charter schools, the first charter schools were created by teachers who wanted to give a priority to their students and treat students with special needs in a special way, and I think that that's beautiful. But the thing that's not fair is that charter schools, although they're publicly funded, they don't have to serve all students. They do not have to serve all students, and they will not serve all students, while public schools are required to serve every student within its own. And I think that's a really beautiful thing. And I think as a board, you guys have a duty to defend the institution of truly public education, because if we don't, we need to think out fifteen or twenty years, okay, about the future, and what happens when we have created through charter school after charter school after charter school that doesn't have to accept every student, two very different and unequal systems of education for our community, and for our, our state and our country. This reminds me of the vouchers, right, that want to, I remember when I was in high school, my teachers were picketing about the vouchers and using public funds for private education. I know that the charter schools are public, but they don't serve every student, so that means they're semi-public, and if something is semi-public, to me, that means they're semi-private. So at the end of the day, I would ask you to really think about the implications of this charter school. I would ask you to carefully look at the legal memos that have gone out for both sides, outlining and coming to an agreement about what guarantees can and cannot be met, and think about the implications for the community members when these guarantees that have been made about how they will serve all the students aren't going to be true. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawthorne. Tyler Forrest, then Armando Grande.
Hello, Madam Chair and board members, thank you for having us here. I'm gonna try not to repeat too much what was said, but just, as everybody knows, right now, there is an effort to effectively, in the words of one parent, hijack the three public schools in Newberry. And as Ms. Hawthorne pointed out, their, public charter schools are called public charter schools because they get public money, not because they accept anybody from the public. You still have to go through an, an application process. And again, like she said, we're not against charter schools, we're against depriving the future children of all Alachua, Western Alachua County, of having the choice to attend their neighborhood public schools. Because as was mentioned, when a charter school's applications exceed their, their slots, it goes to a lottery system. So we're asking that you stand with us, with the City of Archer, which unanimously passed a resolution against this. We're asking you to stand with the vast majority of parents and teachers, and speak out with one voice against this. Now, I understand that you do have obligations under the law, we're not asking you to subvert that in any way. If they win, you have an obligation to negotiate with them in good faith, and I'm sure you will. But we all know that this will harm the entire public education system of our entire county. I'd also like to echo some of the previous calls from Brandy, and request that you do everything you can to make voting easier for parents, whether it's extending the hours of voting, or providing pre-stamped envelopes to parents so they can mail their votes back. We must do everything in our power to ensure that every parent has the ability to easily cast a vote and have that vote counted. So please stand up for all our public schools and speak out against this ill-conceived conversion proposal with a united voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Jen Powell, then Ms. Tina Days.
Yeah, what's Armando supposed to go next?
Oh, Armando, yes, he was next, I called his name. You go ahead, come on, Armando, I called you, you weren't even here, okay, you can come after her.
Okay, hello, Board, Superintendent, everybody. I wish I didn't have to be here. My, I am a parent of a student who graduated from Newberry High School. She attended all four years, she was in the Criminal Justice Academy. She was a cheerleader for three years. My other daughter, my middle daughter graduated eighth grade from Oakview Middle School. At that time, we were living in Archer. These charter schools are a huge concern for me. My daughter even is worried about what's going to happen to the Criminal Justice Academy. You know, what's going to happen to Criminal Justice Academy? How are they going to get bust? We were bust, you know, she would, they were bust from Archer. You know, what's going to happen to the, to the students in Archer? We don't live in Archer anymore, but it is a, a big concern for me, because we still know people who do live in Archer. I really would like for the school board to please, you know, speak out against this. I know that Tyler Forrest had mentioned that this is a threat to all of our schools in this county. It is a threat to all of the schools in the state and in the country. If this happens here, you better believe they're going to start doing it everywhere else. It is a threat to public education. I believe in charter schools, just as everybody else had, had mentioned, charter schools have a benefit, and I agree with charter schools, if they want to open three charter schools in Newberry, absolutely, do it. But do not take our very well-performing schools from Newberry, and if you guys could please united, unitedly speak out against it, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So Brandy Oldman is somebody I respect, coming out of, of the community. What I find really interesting is when we go and walk and talk to the communities, I heard somebody, Madam Chair, I don't know if it was you or somebody up there on the day of state, that you are speaking truth to parents, to families that are out there. And I submit to you, I don't know how true that is, I could talk to these parents and ask them, and the people in Archer who also matter, who don't have a vote, and ask them, have they heard from anybody up there that's looking to, if you turn to your head to the right, have they heard from the far end, the right, or the far left? I bet you they probably have not. I don't know, but maybe they haven't, but I, I talked to a lot of them, talked to a lot of them, we had several meetings, I've been up there, I've seen some of you out there, not everybody up there I've seen out there, I've seen one or two of you, but the same question becomes is, not just about the situation with yes or no, but the situation comes back to what you were talking about, Madam Chair, said and recommended, and we have to have these conversations, we have to have this. It's interesting, whenever I have to call and want to have a meeting, unless you're part of the selected and well-connected, I'm not a part of the clergy, we can't talk to your leadership, it doesn't matter. So we have to go a different route. So I don't know unless we have a certain level of status, if we're a certain level of, if my blackness on the table to speak to your leaders, I don't know. But what I do find interesting is, we keep talking about it's about the kids. The kids is interesting, because let's look back at data that does not care about feelings, the data in asking the right questions, when black children are reading at nineteen percent in this school system. And so we're talking about Newberry of yes or no, this is just the beginning, this is just the beginning, because at the end of the day, it doesn't stop what you do there. Whether they say yes or no, doesn't stop what you do, because it doesn't matter whether if, if you're not meeting deadlines or MSID dates. By the way, I have the signature of the leader of this district, I have the signature form, signed in June of twenty-three. So, you know, you've talked about the word integrity. Integrity, when we're in the military, is what you do when people aren't looking. Integrity is an interesting thing, and I'm just telling you, I'm not going to get into that, because you already talked about it, and it is important to have facts, but I do have it, I had it for seven months. So I remember asking you all, what changed? What changed? Why are we not going to do certain things? And there was this blank stare, squirrel, squirrel, you all looked into space. Whenever you call, when you call the leader of this, this school system, you call, do you get a call back? You do not. How many other parents are not getting calls back? How many black parents have to do that? So I can't call my friends at upper room, lower room, in this church and that church to come up here and speak, but I can talk to my friends and neighbors that are not necessarily part of the, the well-connected and selected that want, you want to necessarily hear from, or that you seem to matter to you. But all those children matter, including poor white children that are failing. So I am, I am no against Newberry, but we don't have a vote. But Archer matters, and those children deserve better. Thank you. Thank you. Tina Days? And these are all the sheets that I have, we have any phone calls?
Okay, and I do think that Gainesville signed with the hit job, and I don't appreciate you not getting all the facts before you print in a newspaper, so I stand here so poorly in endorsing the, the chair, and I, and support, endorse our superintendent. I'm actually coming a different level, I've been part of charter school, I've been part of the plug schools, and I've also been part of a year-round, so I know what it means to be all three. I am a huge opponent, a supporter, I mean supporter of year-round school, it gives the kids a chance to learn what they, keep what they learned for the previous year, I believe the summer is too long anyway, the kids be on computers, tablets, and they don't open a book the whole summer, if y'all want to be honest. So going to year-round, I think it would be a huge benefit, so I'm really a supporter of that, I'm supporter of charter schools to a certain extent. Charter school is good if you're, you know, your kids are doing well, but if your kids are highly advanced, there is nothing for them to do. I had a daughter that was highly advanced, I had a teacher for a charter school told me to take her out of charter school and put her in the matinee program, because she would learn, it was just coming too easy for her. And charter schools don't have a lot of opportunity like a plug school, so you have to think about that, y'all don't have specials, charter school don't have specials. So you need to really think about that. I'm a real supporter of parental choice, wherever the, wherever the school benefit my kids, that's where I'm sending. And so I have a three-year-old, I actually be turning three this year, and so I'm looking to see what school would benefit her when it time for BPK, and I'm, I'm really excited about Williams turning to a matinee program. I have a niece, nieces in Putnam County that has matinee program to start in elementary, and for my nieces, it's a benefit. So if it benefit our kids and the kids in Putnam County, I believe it would be a benefit to kids here in Alachua County. And also, I don't know if the community is aware, we have a local organization called Manners, which is minorities, agriculture, natural resources, and related sciences. We have the only charter here in the state of Florida. I have two daughters that's in our program, it represents the minorities, and they're coming from crop, and they partner with Universal Florida, and they getting ready to go to a conference in Chicago. They're flying out Thursday, and they coming back Sunday, and my babies, this would be their first time on the airplane. And I, I want y'all to support the Manners program, it's the, this is the only chapter in the state of Florida, here in our community. So we need to support them. We need to, we, they, I don't even know why they didn't come, but as a parent, I'm, want to give them kudos to Ms. Diva, Ms. Ferguson, and the Seeker Dennis, they are the chapter persons, and they're really getting our kids prepared to go to conference, and they're bringing over a hundred fifty kids.
Thank you, Ms. Days, all right, we have a phone call, we have three minutes with the board.
Caller, please state your name, you have three minutes with the board. Caller, please state your name, you have three minutes with the board. Hello, caller.
All right, we're moving on, Mr. Andrew, the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the Superintendent recommends that the school board approve the consent agenda as described in Items Two through Twenty-three.
All right, is there a motion?
Move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Surt, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in property second by the said motion, is there any discussion?
I had a question.
Yes.
On the, for grant number ten, the preschool entitlement, I said Ms. Black's name there. Is that, could you help me with that one there, Ms. Black? Is that just a new entitlement, or an addition for?
No, this is an amendment to the existing grant. We had gotten our roll forward dollars, I believe the emails are attached showing the amount that came forward. Usually the roll forward come forward because of personnel that haven't been able to be hired, and maybe an increase in our population of students with disabilities. So this is an adjustment to the, what was approved by the board previously.
Thank you. And number twelve is the same thing, the roll forward, just for that, okay?
Yes, it's the same thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
And then the other, the title, the, the federal grants like that are SRA-related, are those just the things that were adjustments that were made to align the reporting, the reports with how the funds were actually spent? Like from the meetings that we had where we talked about there were, okay. Thank you.
There's no other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving on. Ms. Segal?
Thank you.
Contract with sport video streaming.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have before you for approval, a contract with Agile, Agile Technologies called Huddle, H-U-D-L. It provides streaming services to high school sports athletics areas. The contract is attached. It has been reviewed extensively, I will tell you, by everybody that I could get to review it to make sure we don't step into anything. The superintendent recommends that the board approve and enter the three-year contract with Agile, Agile Sports Technologies for their contractor software license, hosting, implementation, and training services for Huddle online mobile video platform. I don't know if Mr. Garcia is here. I, I don't see him. I will tell you, and, and Mr. Burkett can also support this, is the cost is a little over $170,000 or $80,000. But it will be recouped by what can be charged for the gate and everything else from the schools. And the schools will be repaying their share before they get to keep any of the excess. It's a program that's used all around Florida and is very, I've talked to the folks in Citrus County. They're very happy with it.
Right, Ms. Surt.
Ms. Segal, I'm not sure if you can answer this. I called Mr. Garcia, but he didn't get back with me. So is this like the platform? Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion for?
So move with staff recommendation.
Move?
Second.
Second.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Is this like the platform that is used like if they play away and you want to watch from home? Is that what this is?
Ma'am, it is.
And you pay like a subscription?
You can get a subscription, and you can get it sent to your, streamed to your home anytime.
Okay. I, I was just wondering, and so that, and this is out of the norm. Normally, the software contracts that we've done in the past have been one year. I mean, not Skyward, that's been a couple of years. But normally, everything else that's come up has been one year is?
This contract is also very, it's able to be con, if we decide toward six, within, I think, 30 to 60 days before the end of a year, we can cancel the contract. There, there's a, I tell, I tell you, it took hours to read it because the beginning part gets you nervous about certain things. But toward the end, they have an awful lot of things dealing with public schools and some of our issues. So I, everybody that's reviewed it, we've had no problems with it. And there are good outs for us in case there's any wonderful technology that comes up later.
Thank you. All right. There's no further discussion. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. All right, Ms. Rowe, contemporary history course.
Yes. Good evening, Chair McGraw, board members, Superintendent Andrew. Our social studies course progression has been revised to meet updated graduation requirements. The superintendent recommends the board approve the request to the Florida Department of Education to add an honors version of the contemporary history course to our Florida course code directory as presented. We have John Rem here to answer any other questions the board may have related to the revisions of those course progression.
All right, we've heard the recommendation. Is there a motion?
They're moved.
They're moved. Dr. Rockwell seconded by?
Second.
Dr. McNeely. Is there any discussion? Did you want to say anything? No, okay. All right, just in case we had questions. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. All right, we are back to citizen input. Is there any citizen that's present that would like to comment for us and give your name at this time? Ms. Days? Okay. Ms. Days, let me, right quick, let me get phone call. You can go ahead, go ahead. The phone call, maybe the caller that called in early and maybe trying to get back.
Caller, please state your name. You have three minutes with the board.
Hi, my name is Talissa Barsha. And I just want to say that there is an issue with the violence going on at schools because of the fact that there was three knives found at Canapa Hall Middle. And there was no lockdown. I've asked my son, I did not get emailed until 5:01. That is ridiculous. I should have gotten notified prior to 5:01. And I don't know what's going on with that. That, I, what's the deal? Like, that goes on with what the chairwoman was talking about. And that makes me nervous as a mom. My son is afraid to go to the bathroom. That's a health issue. And he will not go to the bathroom. And I wondered why. Well, here's why. And he said, this isn't the first time. This is just the first time people got caught. And he wasn't even aware that there was knives at school today. And how come we're just getting notified about that? Somebody needs to speak with somebody. This is scary. And then my son was missing all the week before spring break. And they put in grades. And I spoke with the curriculum direct dean. And nothing got fixed about it. And he's failing now. That's an issue with what's going on with what y'all are talking about as well. And what's, I, I don't understand. This is leaving me confused as a parent as well. And him being frustrated as a student when he's never had this issue. And his teachers that he had prior, my daughter has, and she asked about it. And we're, we just shake our heads because he'll get frustrated and he'll start yelling at her. And, you know, we're confused. He's confused. He's frustrated. He's in advanced classes. Like, this is affecting everything y'all are talking about with, you know, the grading and all of that. I'm blown away. I'm pretty sure y'all are blown away with, when y'all look at the figures and, I, I can't think of all those words. Those are big words. I'm pretty sure they're not big words, but they're big words at the moment.
Thank you, caller.
I hope y'all have a great day.
Thank you. Ms. Days? Turn your microphone on, Ms. Days.
We always have the sayings that east side is the best side. So I don't know if y'all are aware of, yesterday, we lost one of the students to suicide. And as a parent, we, it's hard to parent teenagers. Teenagers don't talk to parents. And my daughter, I mean, yeah, my daughter, that was her friend. And actually, I'm here standing up to give praises to my daughter Cameron because he wrote the suicide note on a group chat. My daughter, at 6 o'clock in the morning, she saw the chat. She didn't tell me about it, and I dropped her off to school around 7:30. But she had the foresight to go straight to the guidance counselor and let them know about the group chat message that he posted, saying that he loved, loved his friends, for them not to be sad, and for them to get his toys. And I'm just so proud of her that she saw something and she said something. But by the time that, unfortunately, that she said something, it was too late. And so it grieved my heart. I'm a parent. And they, she said they recognized that the boy was going through problems. Before, the week before spring break, he wasn't doing his work. He was staying home. I guess he confided in them about the problems that the parents, and they knew something. They tried to talk with him about it. But we, you know, we, they, they not going to talk to parents. We, we, but they talked to friends. And I'm just so proud of her. Out of all the people that was in the group chat, she said something. And I'm so proud of her that she didn't care whether she would be considered a snitch, which that is not snitching. And I told her that's not snitch. But we know teenagers feel like anything that they say, that's considered a snitch. And I told her that she wasn't a snitch. And I'm proud of her, and also proud of her getting ready to go to Chicago. And I'm just worried about, we just lost, uh, uh, well, you know, I guess he was a member of the Elatcha County School Board, a, a student in Lincoln, Lincoln State the other night. He got shot. So we, as parents, we have a hard job of raising these kids. It's not like it was back in the day. The kids are not going to talk to parents. So we, as parents, we need to know the signs of what to see when our kids not doing their work. Are they depressed? Are they hanging out in their room? And, and we need to be able to say something. And encourage the kids to go to counseling, talk about it, and not hold stuff in. And, you know, and some of the kids in the matinee program, this matinee program, it might be too much for them. And so that's what I wanted to say.
Thank you. Ms. Sharon Bernie?
Yeah, I was on the phone, and I thought it was very important for me to come in and speak to you directly this today. I am a parent of two students that matriculated through the school system here. I've always been an advocate for the most disenfranchised amongst us. My work has always been indicative of that. How we treat the most vulnerable amongst us tells how we are as a humanity. When we speak from power and privilege, we must always understand that we have to meet the people where they're at. I have a daughter that was disabled that passed in July. I advocated for her every step of the way with the health disparities that she faced. I've watched this community annihilate one half of the community, the most disenfranchised. There's an accountability, I think, that we have, that we require from students, that we don't require from ourselves. And that starts with the leaders. And I always say this as a leader, and I'm a leader. When everything goes right, you're not going to get any credit. And when everything's go wrong, you're going to get all the blame. But you know that that's your job as a leader. And you have to take it. When you first ran, I had a conversation with you at Porter's. Do you remember that? Probably not. And when they attacked you the first time, I came here and spoke on your behalf. I was so disappointed when my other daughter, who was working for the city, was attacked by you in a deployment that she, trying to follow the rules, like we say we want them to do in the guidelines, was adhering to the rules that she was taught. She was bullied so bad, she was almost suicidal. So I want to always fight for those people. And I say, your walk and your talk needs to match. We are addressing symptoms with these kids. We are not addressing the disease. The disease is gentrification. The disease is a, a short extension span because we shove trauma down their throat 90 times a day. And they're trying to navigating in it. We're calling it behavioral, but we cannot matriculate them and create continued conduance of a prison pipeline system because that's not the answer. The answer is trauma. The answer is not being heard. The answer is a tension span that we created. So I don't care if their parents don't care. We supposed to. We're supposed to protect the most disenfranchised, and the buck starts with you. So how you can call yourself bullying somebody, and I have a daughter that was bullied by you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak? Anybody else? Yeah, you can come back.
Brandy again. I just forgot to mention when I was speaking. I have two boys currently enrolled in Newberry and one three-year-old in the pre-grade program. And the very first year, if this charter thing passes, she gonna go into a lottery. We're over capacity. I can't imagine how anybody thinks it's okay to split up siblings like that. And my oldest, if he has to get bust out into Elatcha County, he's got severe motion sickness. My middle child, he's got hypoglycemia, and he could die on an hour-long bus drive into town. We moved where we did because these are good schools. We could walk to all three schools. Like, I, I, I cannot vote just with my interest though because I do live very close to the schools, and maybe they won't cut me out, maybe they will. I don't know. But I do want to speak for those, those people that can't come up here and do this because this is a lot. But Archer, Archer Royal families will be cut out of this. And I hope that everybody sees this. And please don't vote with just your interest. It's going down the line 10, 15, 20 years, and it's nearly irreversible if this passes. So that's all I wanted to say.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. Armando Grundy Gomez. Madam Chair, the other thing I wanted to impress upon us is, is making sure that we have solutions to a lot of these situations and problems. It's easy for us to say to you what we're not doing right, but it's another thing to offer solutions, right? And so when we're wanting to have, looking at all of the buildings that we have as a district and what we control, was a conversation I was wanting to have with your leader about what we could do to look at what buildings and what is going to make sense. But I understand today that I guess Duval or whatever is going to become a VPK, that's great, somewhat great news, I guess. But, you know, we should never run from, you know, what we do. It's one thing I know when we have a circle of, you know, things we like or people we like. But sunshine, and we have a thing, sunshine is important in Florida. It should be everybody. In this district, when you're a leader, sunshine should be for everybody. It shouldn't be a clandestine thing. It should be something that you are not afraid to see. So if I'm having a conversation with just like you, Madam Chair, I should be able to have that same conversation like I'm having with you, Madam Chair, that I would have with one of your other board members or anybody else. And then that, that never changes. And when you're transparent, you have sunshine, you wouldn't have to worry about change. Your story wouldn't have to change, your rhetoric wouldn't have to change, who you say and who your friends with wouldn't have to change because of sunshine and transparency. But the solutions of what we could do to look at, you know, how we're doing these rezonings, obviously, it's going to be a matter, a matter of fact, an endpoint that we have to look at going back and exploring how we do that rezoning and do it effectively and do it well. And we're going to have to do that with a, it's going to take good leadership to do that. Also, looking at good data and a, and a real willingness to take the heat, take the arrows, take whatever's coming at you and get it done. Do the work for the work's sake. But this thing of, I know, I'm going to say one thing to one person, and tomorrow I'm going to say a different thing. That doesn't work. Parents don't have time for that. So like when we're starting schools within schools, it's great that we have an IB school. But what I said, and I did say it, and I'll repeat it, you're going to have parents of a different demographic angry at people that look like me. And some people say, are you black? Well, yeah, I'm a light-skinned black guy. Somebody that starts in, black people are going to be getting it because other demographics may not be liking what's going on with the school within the school. And then when they say, you didn't communicate with us well, we probably need to look at how we're being more communicative with parents and everybody as stakeholders. Whether you want to start year-round school, communication is, is really key. But the other thing, and I think that Ms. Bernie said it well, for those that are really disenfranchised, it may not be your cup of tea, and you may not like somebody that stays able. You may not even like somebody that is part of the LGBTQIA. I get it. You may not like another demographic of people, but all children matter in this district. And I heard you say it, Madam Chair. You're here for all children. So let's do work for the work's sake and not just get, you know, have secret clandestine meetings. Thank you.
Anybody, any phone calls? Okay. There includes our citizen input. Moving on to board member and superintendent request. Nobody has anything? Rockwell?
I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. Student rep. Go on, he's sitting.
Yeah, thank you for letting me act as student representative here. I do, again, want to mention Sean Pomorrow's name, incredibly cherished band member, cherished friend to many. And yeah, it's a really sad time for our community. But thank you for giving them your thoughts, and thank you for speaking. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Board member, Dr. Rockwell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two requests. The first is, I've heard from many of the parents who will be participating in the Newberry vote that the voting process is very difficult for working parents because the voting is only until 4:00 PM. because the voting is only until 4:00 PM. And, um, I'm, I don't, I haven't looked into the legal requirements around that voting. I know they're specific, but if there's any way to extend that until 6:00 or 7:00 PM, even for one or two days of the voting, I know that would really help parents who work be able to participate. And I think anything that we can do to make sure that everyone who's potentially impacted and can vote is able to, because as it is, we know it's a very narrow set of people who even get to vote.
Who set the voting time?
I couldn't hear you.
Who set the voting time? Who, who said that?
That's why I'm not sure.
So the statute, yeah, that's what I want to know. It's a good point.
Those have been set at the school, by the school during their school hours when they have personnel there to assist with that.
So the schools set that?
Is it possible to, to get comp time for someone, overtime for someone, extra personnel, even just one or two days so that? And I don't need a response. This is just something that I think is, is important.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I spoke with the supervisor of election recently. And according to what she shared with me is that her staff will be handling all of the voting. And even though they do not live in Newberry or Archer, they, they will be handling everything with the ballot boxing, keeping it secure, locked, and counting. So unless that has changed, since she said that to me, I do know that for a fact.
Like, Atrius, you want to respond?
Madam Chair, yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
Recognize Dr. Atrius.
Okay.
Share some information with us.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so some clarifications. The supervisor of election has very generously offered staff to assist with the polling. However, we do have to have a staff member from each of the schools present in case there are, there's a need to check Skyward, the student information system regarding eligibility to vote. So that does become problematic in terms of how to staff beyond the regular school hours. We can certainly look into the possibility. Comp time isn't usually an option, but we can certainly look into what those, what options might exist. I think another challenge with that is that voting, according to the legislation, has to take place at each school site. It can't happen anywhere else. So then, again, that becomes a challenge related to security and supervision. The supervisor of election will, we're working to identify collaboratively, as is required by statute, who the arbitrator will be. And the arbitrator is the person that actually counts the ballots publicly. And so it's my understanding that the school principals have contacted, corresponded, began correspondence with the applicants related to the choice of arbitrator. But that, those decisions have not been yet made and finalized.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, I have one other thing. I know that we're going to be further discussing Duval at the April workshop, but I also know that the current tenants are hoping to be able to offer summer programs. And I know that when, when we last discussed Duval at our previous workshop, I brought up whether it would be possible to extend their lease just for the summer. Um, and which gives us more time to decide what we're, we're doing, but still allows them to run the summer programs that are valuable to our students. And I was wondering if any progress had been made on that and if that was something that we could get information on before April 10th because families wanting to make plans for summer need that sooner rather than later.
All right. Any requests? Okay. The only other request that I have is when we have the April 10th workshop. I definitely want us to bring options. Um, I know the staff has been working toward different options as far as the behavior. Uh, I'm, I'm really concerned. Um, with all of the data I began to share earlier, I want this brought, what options that we can do and the cost with that to address it. As you know, City of Gainesville has just hired somebody to work on gun violence. As we know, CTE helps with gun violence. But we have some challenges with this behavior and we've got to do something different. And so at this point, um, there, there are some options that we can do. And I want those brought when we do the trend report. Trend report, we can talk about that data as well. If there's no other requests, then this meeting is adjourned at 7:50. Thank you all.